Eighteen thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. B, rodeo arena board claims paid nine seventeen twenty twenty-five due to timeliness totaling one thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. C, city claims paid on nine seventeen twenty twenty-five totaling twenty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-one cents. D, city claims paid on nine thirty twenty twenty-five due to timeliness and to mail utility bills totaling four hundred and sixty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-six cents. E, Three Forks Rodeo Arena Board Claims To Be Paid. F, City Claims To Be Paid. G, Pledged Securities With Glacier Bank Through Nine Thirty Twenty Twenty-Five. H, City Council Minutes Of Eight Twenty-Six Twenty Twenty-Five Through Nine Nine Twenty Twenty-Five. I, zoning and planning board minutes of eight twenty-seven twenty twenty-five. J, CBD grant applications for long-range transportation plan grant for forty thousand dollars signed by the mayor on nine nine twenty twenty-five. K, contract with Galatin County for library services for fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six for eighty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. L, contract amendment number eight to task order number nine with Great West Engineering for the public water supply project of thirty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. M, order number three with O'Keefe Drilling For Public Water Supply Project Was Fifteen Thousand Nine Hundred And Six Dollars Within Budget. Turbo agree, uh, verbal approval given to Keith on nine twenty-four twenty twenty-five by engineer while O'Keefe was on site. And service agreement with Zach Tesaro Masonry To Perform Mason Work On Well House For Wells Twelve And Thirteen For Fourteen Thousand Seven Hundred And Seventy-five Dollars Signed By The Mayor On Nine Twenty-Three Twenty Twenty-Five. Oh, service agreement with Rivers Oaks Communication Corporation To Draft An Ordinance Related To Telecommunications Right Away And Small Wireless Facility Regulations Up To Ten Thousand Dollars Signed By Mayor On Nine Fifteen Twenty Twenty-Five. P, Service Agreement For Three Years With Hawk Service For UV Maintenance At The Wastewater Treatment Plant For Three Thousand Five Hundred And Thirty Dollars And Fifty-Three Cents. And Q, Draw Packet Number Thirty-Five For The Water Distribution Project In The Amount Of Six Hundred And Five Thousand Two Hundred And Seventy-Six Dollars And Thirty-Eight Cents. ARPA Competency Number Twelve For Three Hundred And Ninety-Eight Thousand Five Hundred And Two Dollars And Seventy-Two Cents. ARPA Minimum Allocation Grant Number Nineteen For A Hundred And Fifty-Seven Thousand Eight Hundred And Thirty Thirty Dollars And Fifty-Nine Cents. And MSEP Number Four For Forty-Eight Thousand Nine Hundred And Forty-Three Dollars. Council, do you have any questions on the consent agenda?
I'll make them look into the second.
Second, it's been moved to second. Does the public have any questions? No? Okay, then we'll have the vote to approve. Gene?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yes.
And Garrett?
Yes.
Our next item on the agenda will be public hearing. And public hearing A, a public hearing and decision on a resolution noting the assessment list of delinquent fees for weed removal and administrative fees and penalty. City of Three Forks, Montana Resolution Number Four Five Eight Twenty Twenty-Five. The resolution noting the assessment list of delinquent fees for weed removal, administrative fees, and penalty. Whereas pursuant to ordinance number five dash seven dash three community care and communication, property owners are responsible for all vegetation on the property and the area that extends from the property line to the center of the street or streets, in the center of the alley. Ordinance number five dash five dash three weeds cutting or removal required states all persons are required to remove all weeds from said premises under their control and to the center of the street or alley along in front or abiding on said premises and keep same free from weeds. Whereas during the months of June, July, and August, two hundred and eleven letters citing number five dash seven dash three and number five dash five dash three were sent to property owners for various out city limits reminding owners of their ordinance of these ordinances and noting any violations. Initial letters provide the property with the minimum property owner of with a minimum of two weeks to bring the property into compliance unless not just weeds are marked, then only forty-eight hours are provided. These letters request that the corrective action be taken within fourteen days and offer that if if the property owner cannot bring the property into compliance within that time to contact the city hall to make other arrangements. These letters also include a list of licensed businesses who performs such services and their and their contact numbers. Whereas after a few days grace period, the total number of days who come into compliance listed in the letters, the city re-inspects such properties. If the property is found to be still non-compliant, a second letter escalating the corrective action requirement is mailed providing another seven days to bring the property into compliance. However, this letter now states that it is not brought if it is not brought to compliance, the city is authorized under number five dash five dash three to enter upon the property and institute appropriate control measures for which the property owner will be well better contest cost. This letter again includes a list of licensed businesses and the option to contact city hall to make other arrangements if the property cannot be brought into compliance within stated timeframe. Whereas after a third inspection, if the property is still found non-compliant, the city institutes appropriate contact measures and sends the property owner an invoice for said work. The invoice provides thirty days to pay, breaks down the work performed and costs of such work. The fees are determined by the city council. Fees, current fees are adopted and via resolution three eight two twenty twenty-two. Whereas number five dash three, five dash five dash three E states that if the bill is not paid, when do such costs including administrative fees and penalties can be assessed against the property if any lawful manner to, in any lawful manner to collect outstanding balance, including the placing a special assessment levy, levy against the property on which the nuisance weeds were destroyed and collect in the same manner as other special assessments by the city and shall constitute a special tax as provided in section seven dash twenty-two dash forty-one zero one. Whereas in accordance with section seven dash one dash twenty-one twenty-seven MCA city. Uh, the city clerk published the notice of this resolution in the Bowley Bowlesman Daily Chronicle On Nine Thirty Twenty Twenty-Five and the Belgrade News On Nine Twenty-Five Twenty Twenty-Five and the Three Forks Voice On Ten One Twenty Twenty-Five as well as posted on the city's Facebook page, website, and around various physical locations. Now, therefore, be resolved by the city, Three Forks City Council, that the following property tax identification number is deemed delinquent. Then you'll have a lien filed against it and a copy sent to the Galatin County Treasurer to be included in the twenty twenty-five twenty twenty-six tax rolls. Council, is there any discussion on this resolution?
I just have a clarifying question. Is this something we do every year?
Yeah.
Okay, and just the number and the property number that we talk about for this in the resolution?
The numbers of letters.
Yeah.
It's like what Wally sends out.
Any discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to pass resolution number four five eight twenty twenty-five of resolution noting the assessment list of delinquent fees for weed removal, administrative fees, and penalty.
It's been moved to second. Does public have anything? Nick?
Hi, Nikki and Mary. I am B E R I. I guess I have three questions. Are we willing to wait to get paid, assuming that that's the only way you're going to get paid on sending somebody to clean up the yards? What is our enforcement for this? And how many letters are actually sent out on it on a basis and how often? Do you only get one notice?
Two hundred and eleven letters were sent over the months of June, July, and August, as said right in the resolution.
Okay, I don't have the resolution, sorry. I didn't realize I could follow along on the screen. I didn't realize that.
Two hundred and eleven were sent, and what was your other question?
That was.
How long are we willing to get paid?
It is, in my understanding, that if we, the city, or you, the city, go out and mow the weeds, so to speak, you send the bill to the resident.
Property owner.
Property owner, and then the owner does or doesn't pay. If he doesn't pay, you then put a lien on the property.
Yeah, it's about forty-five days, like their letter went out to them. Have a copy of it. On July thirtieth. So that was their second letter saying the work has already been done and you have thirty days to pay. It's highlighted in there that if it's left unpaid after this date, a ten dollar late fee will be incurred every month for the balance unpaid. And then any unbilled paid after that date will be pursuant to the five dash three, five dash five dash three E about putting a lien on the property. It says how much it will be.
Okay.
And so it's about, so this letter went out on July thirtieth. As of August tenth, about that time is when they look into it. Um, I didn't draft this resolution till nine fifteen, which was after the last council meeting, so it waited till now. So they still could have came in and paid all this time.
Okay, all two hundred and eleven people or?
Only one property is getting a lien.
Okay.
So out of all of them, they've all taken care, two hundred and ten have taken care of it. I think quite a few got a letter like this that we took care of it.
Okay.
A handful, I have to look at, see what Wally has, maybe a handful, but nothing got to this level where they just ignored it and didn't pay.
Okay. Thank you, and that's what I was.
Thanks, Nick. Is it a lien or a special tax assessment?
It's, it's on their taxes. It's filed as a lien. It's sent to the treasurer's office and they fill in the tax.
It shows up on the property taxes.
And then it's collected within the next year on the property taxes.
I've one question for that. Matt Bogdan, uh, my biggest question was what defines who gets sent out to mow? Because I've seen city employees out mowing, I've seen private companies out mowing. Like, how do we make that fair shake so that, you know, if you go mow, city mows my house and my neighbor's house gets mowed by some guy who charges mileage out of you, that it's a fair shake for everyone?
Fine, it's the same price no matter what. It's set in the fee schedule how much per hour. So it doesn't matter who does it, it's per hour, and we don't pay mileage. It's all we have, city business licenses.
Yeah, I'm just asking because it's so.
We utilize our staffers if they have time permitting. If not, and they say we can't get to that for two weeks or something like that, we might hire somebody, but this year we didn't hire anyone.
So if we, as a city, send a staff employee out there, some, whatever, fifty bucks an hour, and another company comes in and charges nine hundred, there's a flat rate of, doesn't matter, it's eight hundred dollars.
It's only whatever the fees are that they set in that resolution in twenty twenty-two. They haven't been changed.
Just curious, so.
It's a hundred and twenty-five an hour is what it's set up. That way, we have to hire, yeah, it covers our cost.
Any other questions? It's been moved to second. I will have the vote then. G?
Yeah.
Reagan?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yes.
And Garrett?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing number B, item B, public hearing and decision on a resolution amending the total number of permits for residential chickens. City of Three Forks, Montana, four five nine twenty twenty-five, a resolution of the Three Forks City Council amending the total number of permits allowing residential chickens. Whereas ordinance number six dash four B dash two dash one dash one dash A established a maximum number of chicken permits to fifteen. Whereas the council wished to amend the maximum number of permits with out having the time constraints of amending an ordinance, so updated the ordinance in twenty seventeen to establish the permit limit via resolution. The council last amended the total chicken permits allowed in twenty seventeen via resolution number two six six twenty seventeen to thirty total permits. Whereas the city was requested to consider increasing the number of permits allowed in the August twenty twenty-five in August twenty twenty-five. The ordinance committee met on September fourth, fourth, twenty twenty-five to hear public comments and input on the topic. The committee reported this to the city council at its September ninth, twenty twenty-five meeting and recommended by a two-to-one vote to increase the total number of permits by ten to the total of forty permits. Whereas in accordance with section seven dash one dash forty-one twenty-seven MCA, the city clerk posted the notice ordinance committee, uh, posted the notice ordinance committee on its website and Facebook page on nine fourteen, nine eighteen, nine twenty-seven, nine twenty-nine, as well as various physical locations around town. Then published notice of this resolution in the Bowlesman Daily Chronicle On Nine Thirty Twenty Twenty-Five and the Belgrade News On Nine Twenty-Five Twenty Twenty-Five and the Three Forks Voice On Ten One Twenty Twenty-Five as well as posted on the city's Facebook page, website, and around town, various physical locations, as is city policy. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Three Forks City Council that the total limit of chicken permits be increased to forty. This becomes effective today and will remain in effect until the council amends it dated this fourteenth day of October twenty twenty-five. Council, is there any discussion?
Do we have a waiting list? Yes, of two people.
Garrett, I have another clarifying question on that one. Um, is there like a form that someone submits or is it just, I would like chickens, there's an open spot?
There's a whole application. They have to fill out and draw out a lot of plans so we know where the chicken coop is. It has to meet the distance from the neighboring residences. Um, everything with any ordinance they have, there's an actual permit that they have to fill out.
Thank you.
Knowing that to make sure it's clear.
Appreciate it.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number four five nine twenty twenty-five, resolution of the Three Forks City Council amending the total number of permits allowing residential chickens. Second.
It's been moved to second. There's a public cabinet comment. Then we will have the vote. Gene?
No.
Reagan?
Yes.
George?
No.
Ed?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yes.
Garrett?
No.
Read through? Mayor was. You ready? Bust out the gas. I vote yes. Okay. Our next item is C, public hearing and decision on a resolution changing the city council meeting held on November eleventh to alter to an alternate date due to its falling on Veterans Day. City of Three Forks, resolution number four six zero twenty twenty-five, the resolution of the Three Forks City Council counseling the November eleventh, twenty twenty-five, uh, council public meeting and announcing a rescheduled public meeting on November to due to the falling of, uh, on Veterans Day. Whereas per section one dash one dash five B one of the Three Forks City Code, city council shall hold regular public meetings set the second Tuesday of each month and the fourth Tuesday of the month as needed. Whereas per section one dash one, uh, dash two, one, six, I MCA, November eleventh, twenty twenty-five is Veterans Day, which is a legal holiday defined in section two dash eighteen dash six zero one MCA. Whereas city departments will be closed on November eleventh, twenty twenty-five, a legal holiday, and will be closed during the regular business hours. Whereas pursuant to section seven dash one dash forty-one twenty-seven MCA, the city clerk published the notice of this resolution in the Bowlesman Daily Chronicle On Nine Thirty Twenty Twenty-Five and the Belgrade News On Nine Twenty-Five Twenty Twenty-Five and the Three Forks Voice On Ten One Twenty Twenty-Five as well as posted on the city's Facebook page, website, and around town at various physical locations as is city policy. Whereas staff is asking the city council if it wishes to hold a rescheduled public hearing on or continuing holding the meeting at this regular scheduled time. If the council chooses to hold its public meeting on an alternate date, it is common practice to adopt a resolution announcing the alternate meeting date and or time in advance of such meeting. If the council chooses to hold its regular, regularly scheduled meeting date on November eleventh, no action is needed. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Three Forks City Council that it shall be, uh, hold a rescheduled meeting in November twenty twenty-five, two oh six Main Street, Three Forks, dated this fourteenth day of October twenty twenty-five. Counsel, do you have, Gene? I would like to use the date of, well, Wednesday, the day after Veterans Day for a meeting. Let's be the twelfth on Wednesday. There you go.
Thursday and thirteen.
You would rather be Thursday the thirteenth? Well, counsel, what, what's our plans here?
I just, I just put the twelfth out there. I didn't want to do the tenth because it's hard coming off of a weekend and having a council meeting. I wanted to allow the ladies.
Gene, do you go for the thirteenth?
Sure.
Okay.
I didn't know about the rest of the council, but thirteenth will.
Fine with me.
Yep, how about you, George?
All right, whatever.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to pass resolution four six zero dash twenty twenty-five, resolution of the Three Forks City Council canceling November eleventh, twenty twenty-five city council public meeting, announcing a rescheduled public meeting on November thirteenth, Thursday twenty twenty-five due to it falling on Veterans Day.
I second that motion.
Been moved to second. Have a vote. Does the public have any comment? Or is that going to fit into your schedule?
I don't even know. That's too far away.
Okay, all right. Well, then we'll have the vote then. It's been moved to second. Gene?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yes.
And Garrett?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, for our next item. E, public hearing and decision on a resolution amending the existing unwritten policy of accepting deposits on water sewer accounts for those in tenant names and sending copies of late disconnect notices to property owners to new policy affecting one one twenty twenty-six to no longer accept the deposits on tenant accounts or place the account in the tenant's name for any newly registered accounts. City of Three Forks, Montana, resolution number four six one twenty twenty-five. And as you'll see before I get, uh, there's some highlighted areas and we'll come to these as soon as I get done in our discussion. So amending the existing unwritten, uh, policy of accepting deposits on water sewer accounts for those in tenant names and ceasing to send additional copies to property owners when the tenants receive late disconnect notices. Setting a new policy affecting one one twenty twenty-six, any new accounts will no longer be placed in the tenant's name and any deposits on the record will be applied to those accounts. Whereas ordinance nine dash one dash three is one sentence in the twenty-eight pages of other water sewer rules that references a tenant landlord relationship, landlord, property managers, or property owners will herein after be referred to only the proper property owner with its, which, who is ultimately the responsible party for the water sewer service pursuant to section seven dash thirteen dash forty-three zero nine MCA. Whereas for an unknown length of time, but for sure for the past twenty years, the staff can confirm that the process has been for the city to allow water sewer accounts to be placed in the tenant's name. The city has required a deposit to be paid at the time of signup and held on the account. The city currently has ten thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars on its books for such tenant accounts. Whereas when the tenant receives a minimum of two disconnect notices, the deposit applies to the outstanding balance and the account is returned to the property owner's name. Likewise, when a tenant moves out, the deposit is applied to the outstanding balance and the account is returned to the property owner's name. Whereas staff estimates that it spends a minimum of seven hours each month changing water sewer accounts from one tenant back to, to the owner, then to a new tenant. Phone calls explaining the process, making the copies of late disconnect notices and mailing those to the property owner, communicating between all of these parties and administering deposit refunds. It is likely the three, at three times this estimate, it's three times this estimate is more accurate in the time staff spends on tenant water sewer accounts. This does not take into account the cost of added paper, envelopes, postage, or wear and tear on equipment, especially essentially staff has taken on the portion of the role of the property manager on behalf of the property owner to administer the above mentioned tasks. Whereas the deposits held by the city to be, do not benefit the city in any way. The deposits benefits the property owner when, if the account is late or unpaid. Whereas in accordance with section seven dash one dash forty-one twenty-seven MCA, the city clerk posted notice of the ordinance committee meeting to be held on nine four twenty twenty-five on the city's website, Facebook page, as well as various physical locations downtown eight twenty-seven twenty-five. Whereas the ordinance committee the ordinance committee, uh, thirteen members of the public attended most of, voiced the opposition on record of the staff's question to amend the ordinance to state the city would no longer place water sewer accounts in tenants' names. There were ten letters of opposition submitted via email prior to the hearing as well. Staff presented four options on how to proceed. Number one through three below, the committee made no recommendations at that meeting. Whereas at the nine nine twenty-five council meeting, the ordinance committee members relayed four options posed to them, their options of what to, uh, do, including two new options, and then opened it up for discussions. The options were, one, do nothing. Two, put accounts in property owner's name thirty days after ordinance to remove nine dash one dash three as has its second public hearing. Three, as tenants move out, return, return water sewer accounts to the property owner's name. A, allow any future tenant to receive an email bill as a, as a secondary notification what is due each month. Late disconnect notices will obey, will only be sent. What is due each month, late disconnect notices will obey will only be sent to the property owner. And three A above, but also if the account remains in a tenant's name. As twelve thirty one twenty twenty six, the account will be placed in the property owner's name. On one one twenty twenty seven, given property owners over a year for leases to be changed. Four, increase the signup fee to cover the cost of the staff's time changing the accounts and five. Apply existing deposits and no longer require them. Whereas at the nine nine twenty twenty five meeting, the ordinance committee members recommended option three as well as. Apply deposits immediately and no longer require them. One other council member not on the ordinance committee voiced support ceasing sending duplicate copies of late disconnect notices. And apply deposits immediately whereas pursuant to section seven dash one dash forty one twenty seven MCA. The city clerk published the notice of these resolutions of the both in the Bozeman Daily Chronicle of nine thirty twenty twenty five. And the Belgrade News on nine twenty five twenty twenty five and the Three Forks Voice is ten one twenty twenty five. As well as posted on the city's Facebook page, website and round town at various physical locations. Now therefore be resolved by the Three Forks City Council that in order to align with. Section seven dash thirteen dash forty three zero nine MCA. Which states that on or before July seventh annually, the treasurer must give notice to the property owner. Of any assessment owning and in arrears of the city's water and sewer. The city will, one, effective eleven one twenty twenty five, any tenant moving out, that the water sewer will. Will have its deposit applied to the outstanding balance and the account will be returned to the property owner's name. Two, effective eleven one twenty twenty five, the city will no longer require a deposit. For any new sewer, water sewer account, effective twelve thirty one twenty twenty five. City staff will apply all deposits held on a remaining tenant's water sewer accounts to the outstanding bill. Four, effective one one of twenty twenty six, any tenant wanting to sign up for the water sewer service. Will have the customer portion of the water sewer bill and the city's utility software will not have the customers. Portion of the water sewer bill and the city's utility software program completed with the tenant's name. The account will remain in the city owner's name, however, the tenant may provide an email address. To be added to the water sewer according account, serving the address they reside at. So they may receive an email copy of the water sewer bill, the resident portion of the city's utility. Software program can be edited to include the current tenant's name. Any remaining tenant accounts will be phased out as they move out. Five, affecting one one twenty twenty six, city staff will not send copies. Of late or disconnect notices to the property owner, property manager for any accounts. Remaining in the tenant's name. Six, at any time the property owner wishes to switch the customer portion to the name of, for instance. To their name, for instance, as leases renew, the city will switch the water sewer account over. The tenant may also provide their email address to be added to the water sewer accounting service. Serving the address they reside at. Be it further resolved by the city council that hereby direct city staff to one. Send an explanation of the actions in this resolution to all property owners, property managers and tenants to alert them. Of their upcoming changes, two, draft an amendment to the fee schedule to remove the water. Deposify and rescind the resolution number two four three twenty fifteen. Dated this fourteenth day of October twenty twenty five. Crystal, would you explain the highlighted ones for us here that we put down?
Well, the first one is if they don't want to do anything like effective about number five, effective one one. Twenty twenty six, that would decide not to do that, then the header, the title needs to change. So we, on the second one, asking about property managers, not hugging with us at the last meeting because we refer to a property landlord, landlord. Property manager, property owner, like all is the same, but really they're not. So some are property managers, like KTV is a property manager for plenty of properties around town. Would it doesn't seem like we ever have problems with property managers either. I mean, they maintain all variety of properties and wanna make sure things, like their managers, other people's property stay current. So if you wanted to allow property managers to have something on their name, like BACOPKTB, so then that would be up to you. So I left that there highlighted. Then on page three, I'm sorry, I'm gonna make shooters. Number three, again, that's only one person. Recommended this, let's see, only three of the. This is in Georgia Creek, so the three ordinance committee members recommended, but not the whole council. So I think that's something for you guys to say you take that recommendation or don't. And then five, again, the date, I think in the last meetings actually said one one twenty twenty seven. Was what Kelly's recommendation was, giving plenty of time to as leases change and things like that, this could turn over. But it's up to you to scratch it out or not. And then I did get one email just before five, if you're going with, well, I can read that into the record under public comment.
The council. What would you like to do?
Can I say something?
Kelly, I didn't see you, I'm sorry.
My recommendation would be to still send up the past news and the disconnect notices to the landlords. I know that's more work for us here, since they're ultimately responsible for the bill, if they're not getting noticed. I don't think that would be quite fair and I think it would be a compromise, but I agree with not collecting deposits anymore, putting in the tenant's names. Applying all the deposits here in January, just so we're not, don't have them on our books anymore. All of that, but I I feel we should still notify the landlords because the bad tenants are the ones that don't pay their bill. After two disconnect notices, it will be in the landlord's name anyway, so then that'll kind of weed itself out too. Because eventually anyone that's not paying the bill on time, we go back into the landlord's name, but going forward to put it into the landlord's name.
Uh, I I have a question to Kelly or Crystal too, the way I understand it. Say if I if I rent a place from Ron and Mickey and. My name is, their name is put on the property as property owner, they have the option for me. To pay that bill, right?
Yes.
So the city would put my name on that account. Then if for some reason I missed a payment, then they would get notice. Am I right?
Right now, it's in, right now, it's in the tenant's name. And if they miss, if they're late on the payment, we send a late letter to the tenant and send a copy to the landlord.
Okay.
Um, if it's on the disconnect notice twice, then we take it out of the tenant's name and put it in the landlord's name. The only part of that that's written in ordinance is the two disconnect notices, nothing else is written in ordinance that we're, we send the late letters. But I know it's been done since I was a tenant in town, twenty years ago when I first moved back to town, the letters went out. Um, because that landlord or the owner of the property is still responsible for the bill, no matter who's living there.
Yeah.
Um, so that's why I think it's still good to send it to them, but what we're proposing is to, as new tenants move in, it stays in the landlord's name. The tenant can be the resident and get an email bill, pay the bill, I can pay every bill for everyone on the council, it's that tier if I want to every month. Anybody can pay anybody's bill, we don't stop people from paying other people's bills. Um, so they got, if the tenants get an email, they can come in and pay, they can still set up the ACH, all of that can still be done. It's just, once this is all turned over, then any late letters would only go to the landlord and they don't have to make the copies. Send them to the tenant and send them to the landlord and try to keep track of all that.
I would like to mention also that Public Works with like Northwest Energy. They deliver door hangers stating the same thing that is on the delinquent notice, so we put door hangers on all the doors. To give the tenant or the property owner notice that, hey, you haven't paid your bill and. This is an opportunity to do so and then we send the letters out also.
So are you still gonna keep doing that?
With Crystal and I talked about it.
We talked about maybe expediting the hanging the notice on the door, like. I don't, I'm gonna speak for Randy because when I came on, Randy was the Public Works, the guy that hung disconnect notices. We make copies of them and then hold them until the first of the month because it says it do the last day of the month. Did the payments to the last day of the month, we shut off and then Randy would come in and say, did anybody pay or you need me to go hang door hangers? And so they got hung the first, second, the third, you know, if it was a weekend or something like that. Um, and so we've continued that process since he's retired, sometimes they make it over to the city shop. And don't make it on doors for a couple of days, so we just talked today about, maybe we should post them, ask the Public Works Department to post them the same time we mail them. So that if they don't get their mail, at least they got something on the door, because that was the thing, is that maybe nobody's gotten their mail for a week. And we said we're gonna turn them off, they don't even know, they come home, they have their waters, and Randy posted things on the door, so we could do that. It doesn't say anywhere how to do it, that's just what we've been doing.
Yes, you're saying that when you send out a late notice, you guys actually go post it on the tenant's door as well?
No.
I missed something.
I'm saying maybe we do that.
Okay.
Um, right now, right now, when people, we mail them and if nobody pays it after the thirtieth of the month. Then they go out and post it, so usually is half, it took, it makes half of whatever we mailed out. Um, have already paid and then some people still haven't checked their mail maybe, or they just ignored the letter or something like that, then it gets posted on the door. But sometimes that does happen, days after we said it was gonna be turned off is when it's actually posted, which might be a Friday. And then they don't like turning off anybody on a Friday, because nobody's here to turn them back off, so.
Okay, I I didn't realize that they were posted on the doors at all.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I didn't, I didn't know that, sorry, thank you for the clarification.
She, uh, many years ago, when when Sharon Smith and Judy Winger here. I had a hard time going out and shutting people off, so I would kind of give them a heads up. Put something on their door saying, hey, I'm gonna shut your water off, this is Monday, shut it off on Thursday, I'm giving you a chance. So that's what I started doing, so we started in on that deal and they made some nice door hangers for me before I retired. But some people got mad at me and I said, well, I won't let you know anymore, that there's a problem with the shut you off. So these are the, these are the issues, not only the seven hours, but the guys going out and doing this. And. Sometimes I get a call on a Friday night saying, you're not gonna shut my water off this weekend, are you? Well, no, I wouldn't. It's always be on Monday, but anyway, that's part of the thing too that we do.
Um, I have a question about number five. Where it's saying that we will not send copies of late or disconnect notices, um. Is is that something that we would be able to amend, take off of this ordinance or do whatever we'd like with?
Edit this all you want.
And then to do that edit, would that be while you make a motion, you would make a motion and then remove number five as part of it?
Sure.
Okay. So I'll make sure I'm doing things right there.
Any more questions?
What, do you want to think about the property manager?
The property manager one?
Putting it in the property manager's name.
That's the second, that's the first, whereas.
Can I say something in regards to that? Yes.
Before, yeah.
We're still working. Garrett?
Um, just to make sure I'm understanding this, so that the landlord, property management or property owner will. Uh, they would, they would be holding the the water bill, the the owning that basically.
To be in their name.
Yeah, it'd be there in their name and like, is that something that the property owner, or sorry, the property managers would be doing voluntarily? Or would it otherwise be in the name of the property owner?
Right now, property managers, I mean, they'll let us know, I manage this property, this property, this property, the owner doesn't wanna be involved, they paying the property manager to do it for them.
Okay.
So I think they act on the owner's behalf, so I would think they could, it can stay in the property manager's name.
Okay.
They're the ones that are doing all the management.
Enforce them all, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
But it's up to you guys to decide if you wanna do that.
I think leaving that in and having property managers be able to. To have it in their name would make sense.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Garrett?
Um, I'd like to make a motion. To accept resolution number four six one dash twenty twenty five. With the amendment of removing number five. Um, so that the city will still continue to send out copies of late or disconnected notices. So other than that, resolution four six one twenty twenty five, amending the existing unwritten policy of accepting deposits on water sewer accounts for those tenants' names. Um, striking that and then setting a new policy effective one one twenty twenty six, any new accounts will no longer be placed in the tenant's name. Any deposits on the record will be applied to those accounts.
Second.
Is there any public comment?
No, it's public comment, but I kind of had a quick question of of the council, so anybody have rentals on the council? Anybody rent on the council? You are a renter, okay? Just in trying to understand, you know, the amount of wealth and knowledge we have in the community and I see it across multiple things that happen here in town. Like and not having a working SMB process to sit down and ask people for that input rather than writing something blind by the. The action arm rather than the people that had that knowledge. Property managers, you know, I I, as I am not one, I I do have a contract with my wife who is my property manager. I again have that same piece where I have to have a written contract, giving her power to turn to do a lot of those things. So yes, that's a great move, having those, you know, that is an option, but my property manager is also not a utility provider. So expecting her to be able to turn off the water when somebody decides they weren't paying it, although they were getting it, it's still gonna be. At the onus on me and if it plays out like the lawn maintenance, if my property manager doesn't pay for it and. The tenant doesn't pay for it, it doesn't allow me to like, hey, well, turn them both off, I can go pay it, but I can't turn it off. And they can put a lien again against my property for not doing. Um, at the end of the day. I I kind of fall back on that same piece, you know, this is taking more hours of the day, but that was the scope of work. That was written for the employment of people within the city staff to manage a utility. We have a water utility that is managed by the city staff and they're paid to do that. If, again, the hours didn't meet the the timeline, they're using multiple hours, just like if we. Pay a city employee who doesn't get paid a hundred and twenty five dollars an hour to go mow a lawn, we're still billing that other customer a hundred and twenty five dollars an hour. For the lawn being mowed, well, it's because everybody doesn't require four phone calls to change over from tenant to tenant or understand that there. The water bill goes through the twentieth, doesn't matter if you moved out on the first, you're gonna pay through the twentieth. Let's increase that fee and let it be, because at the end of the day, like, we can't turn on and off water.
I don't think, I'm sorry, quick clarifying question, no one's asking them to turn off the water.
What if we don't get paid?
I don't want you to, just is this, are we saying that they need to turn off the water?
We're not allowed to.
If the tenant doesn't pay, we would still turn it off, right?
We, we ask you if you want it turned off, can we turn it off?
But if I choose not to pay.
Then it gets.
It gets turned off to the tenant who lives there. Who could have paid. So.
And who turns it off? Because only the city does the.
Only, only the city can turn it off and when we've asked for it to be turned off, it hasn't been turned off because that tenant, it's been turned into our names. And they haven't paid month after month. It hasn't been turned off because that tenant, it's been turned into our names and they haven't paid month after month. So turn it off. Please, because I don't wanna pay for something that I'm not getting paid for. I'm not getting the rent. I'm not getting the water. I don't want it, but I can't get that done either because I, again, I'm not a utility. So I'm asking the utility company to manage the utility. Um, at the end of the day, you know, I, I, I can judge. Where everything sits. As a council, the, the one person renting here, like. I can't count on my tenants getting an email and paying. I can't risk my property being. Lost due to somebody not paying. So the price goes up. So as we try and drive this forward, the price goes up. We're just driving on the cost of living in town. Where we can manage fee schedules and manage utility properly to cover it. It, it's gonna.
Actually, Matt, you are driving the price up. It's not, the city manages the water. Okay, we manage the water, we send out the bills. And we do everything. You have the choice to ask Randy to turn. Particular address off. Due to non-payment.
And it hasn't happened. When it's been asked for, it hasn't happened. So I can't. I can ask and the answer I'm gonna get is. Sure, it won't happen. So at the end of the day. It does become a property manager who has to now cover the cost of water. It's gonna be included in bills. And because just like free electricity, free wifi, free long distance, you start using it more. If you are not seeing your actual bill. The usage goes up. I saw it, I've seen it in water, I've seen it in power.
I believe the tenant is gonna get an email of the actual bill. I just.
I understand that. At the end. I'm not paying a late fee just because the tenant didn't pay their late fee. I'm not going to. It's gonna go.
It's your property.
It is, absolutely. It's a hundred percent my responsibility.
That's correct.
So if I have the property and it's my responsibility because that utility is not in their name, it's in mine name, even if they're gonna pay it. I'm gonna pay it. I'm not paying an extra fifty, sixty, eighty dollars a month because somebody went, oh crap, I forgot. So I will pay it. But I'm gonna have to pay it every month. And so instead of guessing, well, it's gonna be a hundred this month, a hundred and fifty next month, and I can't adjust their rate on a flexible schedule, a schedule for. You know, their lease, they're gonna get one flat rate across the board that's gonna cover. Just like we said earlier, well, the most expensive guy is a hundred and twenty-five an hour, so. I guess I'll put it the most expensive because that's what we wanna build people. It means the same. Standard that we use across, or that you guys are using across the board with ordinances for fees. The property manager is gonna do the same thing. So it's gonna drive up the cost of rent just to cover their butt for the one month that it's. A hundred and twenty-five instead of the month that's a hundred. So it, it does, it does increase the overall cost of rent and doesn't put the onus on the consumer to manage it effectively.
It puts the onus on the property owner. The onus that your.
But property owner or property manager?
The, the property owner is the bottom line. The property manager works for the property owner.
Yes. And so as a property owner. I'm not gonna risk it. And so I will direct my property manager to say, hey, look, I don't want anything coming back to me. You're gonna just put that into their rent and then rent's gonna go up to whatever the maximum amount of water usage is gonna be. And so everybody's rent's gonna go up. They, they use a hundred bucks a month.
According to option three, you have time to change your lease.
Yes.
Okay.
So so cost of living in this town goes up exponentially if water is included in leases. That's. Are you a property manager? Are you, do you own a rental? It doesn't affect you, so you're not thinking about it the same way that a property owner. And the property managers are thinking about it and that's, or a tenant. Yes, because it ultimately only affects you.
Kelly?
Go ahead and have Garrett.
Garrett? Um, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, you were getting your time, uh, for the public comment.
Yeah, I, everybody else wants to be and I wanna get out of the way, but.
I own a rental, so I am a landlord.
In three words?
Um, no, in both.
Okay.
But they do it in Bozeman the way we're proposing it. What?
Are we Bozeman? Everybody moves here because they don't wanna do things the way they're doing.
Doesn't have to increase the rent is my point. Let me finish my point. Yes, I am a landlord. I do not charge more for mine. They get the bill, they pay the bill. That is what most people do in areas that don't send the bill to the tenants. And why, and that, you choose to rent to people, so it is your responsibility to make sure they pay the bills.
Yes, I completely agree. And just like you.
Your property owner and manager wants to increase, that's on you, that's not on the city.
You said it already. As a city person, you manage how many bills? So you have one tenant to deal with, not sixty tenants. And if it took sixty tenants worth of time, what are the odds that one or two or three or five of those are late? Just like right now, you don't wanna deal with late notices.
That's.
If you had more than one tenant, you wouldn't want.
Three minutes is.
Please sit down now.
I'm, yeah, please. I would love to. I bet.
Just a sec, was, uh, Garrett, what were you gonna say?
I just was making sure that everyone is getting a chance to be heard.
Yeah, I would love to have finished comment then not be counter.
Crystal, did you wanna say anything? Okay, so. Kenny, can I speak?
Oh, it's behind you.
I'm Ken Allen. I hope most of you know me. Been here for years. A little letter to the council and it was more. From the heart. About my background and not wanting to have to move out of town because I can't afford the rent and what this is doing is pushing up rents. We rent, my wife and I moved back here after. We had a hiatus for about six years. On the road RV and we specifically picked to rent. We bought our old home. We rented the property. And since we moved in here. With this property sixteen years ago. Could never, ever been late or missed a payment on our water, never. So it's. There's a lot of us that are like that. I'm not necessarily signaling that out. But, uh. Because of water, a lot of other things, our rent, our, our lot rent has gone up three hundred percent since we moved. In here sixteen years ago. But what I wanted to say today. Got my letter, hopefully you all read it. This is from a different perspective. If you move forward on this proposal and not allow. Not allow renters. To pay their own bill. And turn it over to landlords who will. Have to charge extra money to compensate for the administrative fees. Basically what you're doing, you're violating. Federal Fair Housing laws. I talked to a couple attorneys and I've done a lot, a lot of. Background checking and digging into it. And why I say that is because all of you on the board. Are homeowners. One way to hear. And I'm most of you, I'm most of you for. A lot of years. Um. Nobody's holding your feet to the fire whether you pay your water bill or not, are they?
We, we, aren't, aren't we under the same conditions that the tenants are? If I don't pay my bill, that sucker sitting at the end of the table is gonna cut my water off.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about raising your rent.
Isn't he just the mayor?
Landlords, landlords will have the right or will be able to whatever raise the rent. On, on your property, your house, whatever. To compensate for the administrative charges that costs it, it's gonna cost it. I'm not asking anybody to pay my bill. I pay my bill every month. I pay all my bills every month.
And you still will be able to if this passes.
If this passes, if it's.
No, you, the tenant can pay the bill.
If section six.
The tenant can't pay the bill, but they can.
Yes, please. Section six says.
But they're not.
They're not afforded the opportunity by the property.
The tenant may also provide the email, uh, address or post office box address for the water sewer bill. So if I rent from Matt. My name can be put on that. And I pay the bill, but if I screw up, you hear from the, the city. You see what I'm getting at? And then you, they can shut my water off. Now, you said something about sixty dollars a month, sixty, once they're shut off, they, they're charged sixty dollars, they have to pay it. If they want, if they wanna flush the toilet, they're gonna have to pay it. So this is what I'm saying, your, your name's still gonna be on there if you want, if they want it on there.
If the landlord wants it on.
Then if something basic, the main thing that I see that's gonna happen here is when somebody moves out, it's automatically put back in your name. It's put back in your name, the property owner. And then when somebody new comes in, it's changed, right, Kelly?
It's what they're wanting to do.
So is this going to be grandfathered?
Yes.
For a year?
No, anybody currently renting will remain in their name until a new tenant moves in.
I think you wanted to add a.
Yeah, that, or that's what the.
That's a concern to me because it's not delineated in that. That's. Why I asked that question when I first came.
Yeah, I don't know.
And, and that was, that's the thing because I don't think it's fair to us to have for years been paying our bill, all that. And have to be persecuted for the people that aren't doing the bill.
Well, I don't know why your lot rent went up three hundred percent.
So.
It says under one, effective November first, any tenant moving out, the water and sewer account, um, with a deposit applied, the account will return to the property owner's name. Effective one, one, twenty-six, and a tenant waiting to sign up, it will, it will remain in the, the owner's name. It doesn't say any current ones are going to be transferred out of the owners or out of the tenants' names.
Then if anybody new comes in.
The new people, if a new person comes in, it stays in the landlord's name, but all existing renters, it remains the way it is unless they have disconnect notices.
That sounds fine with me. If in fact, that's the way it ends up happening. We all, we said that our water bill a few months back is only gonna go up five bucks, went up fifteen. Went fifteen for me. I went from eighty-five to just over a hundred.
Sewer is part of that with water, so you, that's the problem.
Yes.
The magic trick of, uh, on same bill, but it's not.
Just saying.
Any other questions?
Can you guys hear me all from here? Um, hi, Crystal and members of the city council and all attendees of this meeting. I apologize for not being present in person. I would like to reiterate my previous statement made because I apparently wasn't heard the first time along with all the others in opposition. How often do you have more than a dozen people in opposition? I'm a landlord myself and represent for a property that was my dad's. Putting my wa, putting the water bill as the responsibility on the landlord, of the landlord, puts a situation in the landlord's hands. Why? Because in the summer, the water bill varies so much. How is a landlord supposed to set a monthly rent for their tenant with a fluctuating water bill? It's not possible. It's like the power bill. There's a reason the tenant puts it in their name. These types of utility bills need to be in the tenant's name. Because they are not the same amount every month. The rent is the same every month. How would a landlord be able to get this amount from the tenant? Let's help adults be adults and make them accountable for their water bill. I do not support putting the water bill in the landlord's name. Other notes or questions? One. The city council members are hired to listen to concerns and also represent the city, citizens of Three Forks. Please remember how many have opposed this and be our voice. Thank you for your service. Number two, how often does the city follow the rule of disconnecting after two times of being late? Number three, is the late fee accounted for in a separate income account? Again, thank you for your time. Respectfully, Kim Cantapink.
Crystal, can you answer those questions?
Can I? Can I answer them? Um. The last time we probably had this much opposition was to RV park. Which had conditions put on it and was still approved. That's a zoning thing. I don't know. Oh, maybe chickens in the very beginning. Mm-hmm, uh, was probably before that and medical marijuana before that and semi trucks parked in the residential area. When I was on the council, where those were two big topics. Um, all of those actually were worked out. Chickens made it through. With a limitation, semi trucks are allowed to be parked in the residential neighborhood as long as they don't idle more than thirty minutes. Under zero degrees or something like that in a twelve hour period. So I think they've all been hashed out and got. Concessions. And there's nothing for me to answer on number one. You know who you work for. Um, two, how often does the city follow the rule of disconnecting? We don't keep records of it, but I can remember three were turned off this last month, this month. Um, four were turned off the previous month. All of those, I think, but one have still paid, have paid and are turned back on. And that's what I can remember from the last, uh, two months. Is there a late fee accounted for in a separate income fund? No. The disconnect fee when they have to pay an additional forty dollars if it gets turned off and they have to turn it off, that is kept in, uh, accounts, not funds. Right, yeah.
Randy, can I say one more thing?
Yes, Kenny. You, you can just stand up, stand right.
Okay, it's fine. Um. I came back here in nineteen ninety after I got out of service because I knew what this was like here. My relatives have been here since early eighteen hundreds. I'm related to half the people in town. It's a community where we all take care of each other. We look out for each other. Well, in the last few years, with the influx of a lot of people from a lot of other areas. That's changing and it's changing fast and I don't wanna see it happen. This isn't Bozangels. And we should keep that in mind. This is Three Forks, Montana. We take care of our own. We look out for each other.
Thanks, Kenny. Nikki?
Move that thing too, as you please, Tom. Up to you. Sorry, I didn't move that there.
Um. I'm. Say the least, very passionate about leaving this in the tenant's name. And to help me not get off track. I printed some packages. These are the packages that I presented to the actual committee. I only printed five, so you guys have to share. I think that you guys, the committee got them. And then I, I printed this off too. Again, I'm just gonna try to say what I got highlighted, but this is my official. I guess two cents. I did print one for everybody always wants. Pass these to each other yourselves, please. Yeah. You, the city are a utility provider. Don't make us landlords. I'm, I'm making a very, my husband and I are property owners here in Three Forks. I'm deeply concerned about this resolution. There is an unwritten policy. It says that in the, in the title of this. But in my opinion, this resolution says so much more than what just the title presents. The. Plain terms, the city is, you're trying to remove tenants from our town. Mr. Allen hit that pretty well. I, as a property owner, will in fact put the water in my name and if the tenant wants to come in here and put their name, the email on it, that's fine, but they're still gonna claim me a flat fee. The average water bill, we were told by the city is a hundred and twenty-four dollars, thirteen to a hundred and twenty-four dollars. My flat fee will be a hundred and fifty. End of story. I already have that in place because we do have one tenant that is in my name. And he has been paying a hundred and fifty dollars a month for his water, regardless of what he uses for the last two years or as long as I own that particular property. That's just what's gonna happen. The tenant can come in and pay the bill, but I'm still gonna pay that hundred and fifty dollars. So that's not gonna, Mr. Allen's correct, he's not gonna get the option. Just the way I'm going to do business, just gonna be really upfront about that. On your website, it says city, this Three Forks is a great place to live. This is not helping it. You're losing that. You're gonna not find out who lives in this town. You're gonna lose who lives in your town. You're not gonna know who is in your, in your, in my properties. You're not gonna know that. Like Matt said, when they don't pay for their own water, they don't care how much they use. That's gonna change everything, and depending on how much my total water bills go up, I will adjust accordingly. This is being sold as a small administrative change, but really, I'm not convinced it is. You're still doing the same amount of work. The girl's gonna put the email in there and you're gonna send an email to the tenant instead of the landlord. You're gonna send the landlord or the property owner the bill. The bill comes to me, the bill's in my name, I'm paying that bill, I'm not paying additional late fees, that's just the way that's gonna go. If it truly takes six hours to pull all the basic data in that packet that I handed to you. I asked a good number of questions that I needed, and this was before the committee report, for committee meeting. I asked those questions because I wanted a good basis as to why and how this was coming about. This information is what I was given. And I was told these pieces of information took the city office six hours to compile. I paid a hundred and eighty bucks for that. I, one, don't think that looks like six hours of work. I literally spent all day on this because I wanted it to be perfect, I wanted it to be right, I didn't want to come across as a cranky old bat. I wanted to come across as knowledgeable. But I'm very passionate about it. You're, you guys, with this resolution, are hurting my tenants. You're hurting my tenants, hurting my tenants. Because I'm not gonna give Mr. Allen the opportunity to pay his bill. You already have the rules in place, under section, not, your title nine, two, one. Nine, two, what's that? Nine, one, one, you already get to charge interest for late fees. It says it right there, assessing the interest rate, one and a half percent on above bills that the tenant pays. Title nine, one dash two is a service charge, you get to charge ten bucks for it. So the girls, the city office, whoever's doing it are getting paid, maybe not the door hangers. Maybe not the door hangers. And three, again, in the same one, title nine, one dash three, tenants receiving disconnects, there's notices two times within the residency. During the committee report, it was told us that that is, that the staff gives the people grace, they try to give them grace, they try to work with them, much like friends. I don't want to shut your water off on a Friday afternoon. They give them grace, you give those tenants grace, whereas. This says two times, and that could be if you just don't like somebody, you can shut off, they've been late twice in six years. Whereas the other guy who's been late six times in the last two months, maybe that's impossible. Gets grace. This doesn't have guidelines for it, put some rails on it, use what you've already got there, put some rails on it. Um. Back in, so that's nine, one, two, one, 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 two, one, three. On. Nine. Three. I guess it's nine, two, two, number ten, it says service control, and this is important in my opinion. The water, wastewater operators shall cause consumer services to be turned on or off promptly at the request of the city clerk. Now, this is gonna start a fight, and I'm, I'm sorry, girls, but the city clerk has the right to say, turn the water on or turn the ri, water off. And it's my understanding that that's not happening. The city clerk, you have the rules, the city clerk says, you've been late twice, turn it off. As a Montana landlord who child, follows the rules, if the tenant hasn't done, has the same or similar. Sense, in a six month time, twice, that has caused for me to, to stop the lease. Just put some guidelines on the rules we already have, don't just flat out change everything and make it hard for the tenants to be here, make it hard for us as landlords to get tenants. We try hard, guys. There's only a few slow guys out there, and I don't actually even think all of them are property or renters. I think there's a lot of property owners that are just happy people and don't pay their bills, but I don't think it's that much in tenants. In that packet I gave you, there's broke down by section, there's a section in there that tells you how many accounts are just. Water in the tenant's name. And it's a small piece of the puzzle in comparison to all of the water that you guys actually provide. So. I didn't go anywhere near what my script says. So. I do want to say that the public opposition is being ignored if you move forward with this, this is just a staff thing. And I'm. In serious disagreement with that. Please don't do that to us. If a tenant doesn't pay, shut the water off, you guys have the tool, you have the authority, just do it. Let's consider asking how much have we been making in late fees? I know as a landlord, if I, do you pay any late fees? I have a track, I can go to my, I can find out how much I can pay in late fees. I'm sure property managers have that, I know other property people have that. Define what your timeframe is for the two disconnect notices, I gave you the MCA for the landlord-tenant law. Like Mr. Allen said. This is a small little town, let's keep it small, let's not go into Bozangels. But let's keep the personal responsibility where it lays, and that's what the person that's responsible for, the person that's using the water.
Can I add like one, uh, my cross? Like this, my one piece, which was, when we went to, and I, I was, I think in Colorado, so we zoomed in to the. Meeting that happened. Oh, I always try to, yeah. Um, one of the things that we left that with was, and I guess because it wasn't officially verbally tabled. The committee did not vote yes, they did not vote no, they were left with a non-tabled item.
The committee doesn't vote because the city council does.
Yes, but normally the committee leaves with a, we're gonna send this forward, or we're gonna hold this in committee, or we are gonna table it. And so it was led with no vote, because everything before it was voted on. And then we assumed there was gonna be a back and forth to communicate about this and, and come up with some really like, one that everybody like, this is great, it solves. The office's problem, the council's problem, and the landlord's problem, all in one false loop. Rather than being what comes across now as an angry argument from all four sides, it seems. So, I, that's where I was at, and I, I like, literally, or we would have tried to be here on the ninth, when it was magically voted on or been zoomed in, or not brought forward here.
And just so you know, you. You're, you came across garbled over that whole meeting.
No, he did not.
I don't know. I, that's, I apologize if I came up across garbled, I wish somebody would have said, please repeat yourself, so.
I asked several times.
Okay, I, well, I, again, apologize.
That was just my one, Kelly, we're gonna give you five minutes.
Okay, so before you guys, um, I compiled, um, my twenty twenty-five late fees. And I pulled them all out of my tenant's files. This not only has all of my Northwest Energy notices, but it also has the City of Three Forks' notices. I don't know what makes twenty twenty-five so much larger than twenty twenty-four, and I have not increased or decreased tenants. So there's two different stacks, I only compiled the information in the spreadsheet for twenty twenty-five, because it's, um, yeah, because that's what I chose. So that will come up a little later in the conversations. Anyway, most of you all, who I am, my name is Kelly, I have been a licensed property manager for the state of Montana, and in this town for over twenty years. I have lived the majority of my life right here. I used to come to these city council meetings all the time, until I realized. It's a waste of my time. Just like now, you see, I used to believe that you had a voice, that what the community wanted was being heard. If that was the case, this resolution proves once again, you do not. Not in the slightest. Just look at this instance, it was brought forward to a committee by the staff. This issue was addressed by a majority of opposition, in fact, I don't think there was anybody other than the staff that was for this. I think over fifteen people either emailed or spoke against it, I guess that was quite a bit more. Even one city council mem, or one city council member said, maybe it should just be tabled, but yet here we are. So let me state this again for the record, I'm fiercely opposed to this resolution. Do I think this matter could be changed? Sure. Like most things, it could be updated, we could have increased security deposits to actually cover the balance of a water bill, two months' worth. Fees could increase to cover those increased costs. Pro-rate the bill so that people are paying for what they are actually using. Or align meter readings at the end of each month instead of the twentieth, so they align with the majority of the move outs. An ordinance actually rewritten to spell out in black and white. So there is a clear guideline, rather than using their best judgment. I don't have the ability to say, you can pay your water bill, sorry, Ed, I'll just take that this time. I can't do that, what it is for one person, it is that way across the board. So like Mickey said. Sorry, Ken, you're not gonna be able to pay your water bill because I can't pick and choose, that's against fair housing. Can we all agree that water is a utility? Just like power is. Should I, as a landlord, be financially responsible for the consumption of someone's power or gas? Then why should I be for their water usage? If you didn't have to pay your power bill, would you just leave your light on? Would you think twice about turning the heat on? Are you as conservative with electricity when you're in a hotel room? The answer's no, we're not. We're not mindful, because why should we be? We've already paid the rent, we've already paid for that hotel room. Yeah, we're just going out to dinner, just leave the lights on. They aren't going to charge us more if we just leave the lights on or turn up the, the heat or the AC. The same will be true if the tenant is not responsible for their water usage. I can tell you firsthand, tenants do not care if that toilet is running when they don't see the water usage increase, thus their bill will increase. Do you guys like to be able to say how your money is spent? I do. Here's another major reason for the water utilities to remain in a tenant's name. If their tenant is past due, should we be able to continue to have those services free of charge? If the power bill goes unpaid, the electricity or gas, it shall pay the bill, it's turned back on. The same should be that of the water bill, the difference is, as a licensed property manager, I'm required to ho, uphold the Montana landlord-tenant law. If that utility is in my name, I can't choose to disconnect that for non-payment. Late fees, I have gone through and pulled all notices I have received for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. I did sit down and calculate the late fees that were collected so far, and I must add, the late fees collected by the city of Three Forks, not by me. For my tenants, so you see the spreadsheet. Where is? Where is this talked about in regards to costing the city? This is actually something that is benefiting the city, being able to collect those late fees. How much in late fees are collected on a monthly or yearly basis? Why isn't that separated? That is data you guys should know. Actually, the city would earn money having the tenant's name on the bills rather than in mine, guaranteed, it will be lost revenue. Is the city council looking for ways to reduce expenses? How about hiring an outside person to look at the efficiency of the city office staff? How about turnover, how about other turnover in other departments? Why is the library going through so many directors? Has the council even questioned this? Is it necessary for the staff to take the same lunch break and the office be closed for an hour? On weeks that there are other obligations, like committee meetings or city council meetings, is the staff in overtime? Or have they had the oversight to let them have a half a day off or come in late or leave early? I'm sure there are other ways that we could look at to reduce the amount of staff hours. If I have to do the job of the utility company and have my names on the bill, account for the payment, the data entry, the filing, essentially all the bookwork associated with such. I'm going to charge for that time, thus the tenant's costs are going to increase. I'm also going to make sure the bottom line is covered, so if a tenant's typical balance is a hundred and twenty dollars, I'm going to make sure. During those summer months, when their water usage may be higher, those activities are covered, thus higher costs. If the staff has so much work to do, why are they creating more for themselves? Why rush this into resolution? Just like the U-turns on Main Street, why wasn't this recommendation made just to leave it? I have several elderly tenants, they don't have any now. Heck, I have even some tenants that don't even have a P O box, I don't understand it, but that's not my job to make sense of that. Um, one of the questions that I do have, because I am also a property manager for several commercial buildings, is this gonna apply to commercials as well? Um, I guess that is. I think that's it.
Thank you, Kelly. Council, is there a discussion on this?
I just, I, I, I wanna say that both of the property managers or landlords that are here today have ignored the. Statement on option number three, it says the tenant.
They understand the tenant can pay their bill. They can't have a rule that applies to one person that doesn't apply to every person, it's, it has to be the same thing.
Okay, so that makes my point. Our, our rule says as tenants move out. They will return the water bill to the land, the property owner, okay? You guys are making the choice to charge your tenants the rest of the month. It's you guys doing, it's your responsibility.
Whatever you guys say to justify it, sir.
Can I just hold it up?
Yes, make it quick, this.
It is my understanding that they are, you, the city of Three Forks, are going to put all water eventually into the property owner's name, end of story. This resolution actually even says January one of twenty twenty-seven, giving us property owners time to change it leases into our name. It says that in the resolution. So by January one of twenty twenty-seven, Mr. Allen and Clam are no longer able to vote. So we.
What?
He no longer gets to pay his bill, he doesn't, I say get to vote.
That's because of your policy. That's one of the choices, that's not what they're voting to do.
Kelly, could you explain that to Mickey?
The, now therefore resolved does not mention the January twenty twenty-seven, that was an option they were given to do, and they're not choosing to do that. That therefore now be resolved is what they're gonna vote to do or not do. So the January first of twenty twenty-seven is not in play.
Am I misunderstanding that you are going to put all water accounts in my name as people move out?
All the existing ones right now will stay the way they are right now, nothing will happen to Mr. Allen's bill, it will remain in his name. Until he moves out or sells his trailer, then it will go to your name as the property owner.
So you're not going to put Ken Allen's water in my name?
Not if this passes, no, as written. That January first was an option, that's why it's in the resolution, it's under, whereas it's, the now for it there be a resolve, it does not say January first twenty twenty-seven. Because with the last meeting, they did not want to do that. So anyone right now that's a renter, their bill will not change unless they have disconnect.
Your?
Um. I just want to make sure everybody had a, all public comments, I think everybody's had a chance to speak their piece on that. Um, I think what I'm hearing a whole lot tonight is a bunch of unintended consequences. Of, of a goal that the city and the staff had, and. Uh, repercussions of those actions. Um. There seems to be a whole lot more to this than, uh, making the city a bit more efficient, which was, um, our discussion and goal when it was being proposed. Um, that being said, I would like to make a motion to table this, um, ordinance.
You already have a motion and a second on the table that technically for Robert's rules, you need to make a decision on that.
Okay.
Or I, Susan, please correct me if I'm wrong, or do they work backwards and do a new one, and then they vote on that, and then go back to the first one?
The original motion, um, and second, can withdraw those if they choose.
I've, did I make that motion? I would like to withdraw my motion. I would like to withdraw my motion and make a second motion.
Does the second agree with withdrawing it?
Yes.
It was Reagan, wasn't it?
All right. I would like to make a new motion that this ordinance gets tabled. We need to, it needs to have some work. This, we have a goal that we're trying to reach. Sounds like it's not going to be meeting that goal. That's my motion. I would like to table this ordinance until we get a rewrite, then we can bring it up again, where everyone would have another chance to take a peek at it and come in to have this discussion for.
So who would do the re, like, what would be the next steps? If we tabled it, would there be another ordinance meeting, public committee?
I, I think there should be. I don't think I should draft it because when I drafted it's, you know, based on what we were trying to do. There's some, still a lot of questions I left for you guys in there. So I think you guys need to come up with something.
So maybe our next discussion on this can be at our next council meeting? Or do we need to have?
Schedule an ordinance committee meeting.
Uh, can I do that? I'm not on the ordinance committee.
Oh, yeah, you can do it at a council meeting.
I, I just would like to be involved and, and have this discussion. I just feel like we need to, we need to pause this tonight because this, this needs to get paused. I feel like there is too much unintended consequences happening right now.
I still feel like there's not, we're not clear. There's still a lot of misunderstanding.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comment?
I'll third and fourth that, but I don't know how you're going to keep us in the loop.
Well, what I would like, we'll have an ordinance committee meeting. I'm, I'm going to be there too.
He, he just said a full council meeting.
If you guys would like to have like a sit-down lunch or afternoon or evening to get a couple of people to get, not maybe just to try and have input to wording that isn't in such a feeling, anybody feeling attacked anyway, I think is the, some way to.
Constructive.
Yeah.
What I would request is that you protect the renters. This whole thing tonight has been, oh my gosh, let's protect.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. This is, this is not a town hall. And so that needs to cease. There, I think the motion was to table this and there was asked for direction. And, and the suggestion was is that the direction should come at the council. So I would suggest to follow up on that, that what the council does is set up a separate meeting that's a work meeting where you can sit down with the people who are raising their concerns and not do it on a council meeting night, set up a separate meeting. And I don't care if that work meeting is over lunch, as long as Matt Buglin's paying for everybody's lunch.
We'll all drink Big Forks water.
But that's, I, that, I think that's a way to maybe move this forward to get, so I think what you should be looking at is a council meeting that's a special work session at which no decisions will be made.
I like that a lot.
Okay, what does the rest of the council think about that? Do I have a motion to?
You have a vote.
To vote?
We have a motion second.
Do I have a vote on this?
Voting to table?
Table it and you get a work, a work session.
Add a work session, yes. Yes, Jean? Yes, Reagan?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yes.
And Garrett? Yes.
Thank you, and I'd like to see you guys here too, working with us, okay?
Love to have an invite.
And we'll figure out a time down the road for that. Thank you very much. Okay. Our next item. Thanks, Ken. Pardon me.
I got it.
Sure.
Well, hope it's not permanent.
Okay, our next item on the agenda, a public hearing and decision on a resolution and then the established mills to be levy for fiscal year 2025 through 2026. Uh, the original resolution was number four five three 2025 on eight twenty-six 2025. Okay. I'll wait, I'll wait till the noise gets down here and then we'll get started. Okay, city of Three Forks, Montana, resolution number four six two 2025 and resolution of the Three Forks City Council amending resolution number four five three 2025, which establishes the mills to be levied for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2025 and ending June thirtieth, 2026. Whereas pursuant to section fifteen dash ten dash four two zero M C A, a governmental entity that is authorized to uphold mills may impose a mill levy sufficient to generate the amount of property taxes actually assessed in prior year plus uh, one half of the average rate of inflation for the prior three years. Whereas the Department of Revenue provided the city with a certified value of a mill for its taxing jurisdiction under section fifteen dash ten dash two zero two M C A being four thousand seventy-six dollars and six cents per mill. Whereas the city of Three Forks has determined the number of authorized mills to be levied using calculations imposed by section fifteen dash ten dash four two zero M C A. Whereas 2025 legislature via Senate Bill five four two amended section fifteen dash ten dash four two zero M C A requiring a taxing entity may either elect to a, a transition, a voted bill levy to a dollar-based mill levy, the amount of the property taxes assessed in the fiscal year 2025 and thereafter subject to the provisions of fifteen dash ten dash four two zero one A or B levy the number of mills in the fiscal year 2026 that will generate the amount of property taxes assessed in the fiscal year 2025. In fiscal years after 2026, the local government may levy an amount not to exceed the number of mills levied in fiscal year 2026. Whereas the Montana League of Cities and Town suspects that the most entities will go with the dollar levy amount. The city treasurer recommends adopting the method in section fifteen four two zero one A M C A transitioning a voted mill levy to a dollar-based mill levy equal to the amount of the property taxes assessed in the fiscal year 2025 and thereafter. Whereas the city count, whereas the council adopted the mills to the levy on August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five via resolution number five four five three 2025, but failed to note how many mills the dollar conversion equates for the voter-approved mills. Whereas pursuant to section seven dash six dash forty twenty-one M C A, the city council advertised the date, time, and location of this public hearing in the Losman Daily Chronicle on September thirtieth and Belgrade News on September twenty-fifth and the Three Forks Voice on October first, twenty twenty-five, as well as posted this notice on the city's website, Facebook page, on the city hall window at the post office and at the three local banks. Whereas the city of Three Forks has three voter-approved mill levies that were authorized before May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, number twenty-two twenty, the Library Operating Fund, three, three mills voted in two thousand four, which equates to sixteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. This would be four point one, four point eleven mills based on this year's mill value. Number twenty-three forty, the Fire Control Capital Improvements Fund, five point five mills folded in two thousand and one, which equates to thirty thousand dollars, six hundred and eighty-six dollars. This would be seven point five three mills based on this year's mill value. The Fire Relief Agency Fund, one point five mills folded in two thousand nine, which equates to eight thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. This would be two, uh, two point zero five mills based on this year's mill value. Now therefore be it resolved by the Three Forks City Council as established by section fifteen dash ten dash four two zero M C A, that it authorizes mills to be set at one hundred and eleven point, uh, seven zero and be levied for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six. And that one, the voter-approved mill levies above will be transitioned to a dollar-based mill levy equal to the amount authorized in Balarum Tax Revenues Assessment in fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five and thereafter subject to provisions of, of uh, section fifteen dash ten dash four two zero one A M C A. And two, for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six, the Three Forks City Council will levy above dollar amounts for the voter-approved mail levies, which are A, number twenty-two twenty Library Operating Funds to, will be four point one zero six four mills. B, fund number twenty-three forty Fire Control Capital Improvements Fund, B will be seven point five two eight three mills. And C, the Fire Relief Agency Fund will be two point zero five three two mills. Be it further resolved as established by section fifteen dash ten dash four two zero M C A, the Three Forks City Council authorizes the total mills, including the voter-approved mills, to be set at one, one hundred and twenty-five point three eight seven nine. In pursuit to section fifteen dash ten days, four two zero one A M C A for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six, dated this fourteenth day of October, twenty twenty-five. Council, do you have any questions on resolution four six two?
Next motion to approve resolution four six two dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution of Three Forks City Council amending resolution number four five three dash twenty twenty-five, which established the mills to be levied for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
It has been moved to second. Does the public have any questions? Well then, we shall have the vote. Jean?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution has passed. Okay, if you look on our agenda sheets, Susan has fixed that for me. What do you call this, Susan? The synopsis. For all of the growth ordinances, the new ordinances that we have been working on. And so I will read the synopsis with this will kind of explain each one. And we'll go from there. So if you guys don't have this, it's up to me. So the Three Forks Council normally reads each ordinance word for word into the record. The reading of the ordinance into the records is not required by law. As the council has five zoning ordinances scheduled for the first reading tonight, instead of reading each ordinance word for word, staff has prepared a summary of each ordinance of the five chapters. All five are procedural. I will read the summary and if the council then wants the ordinance to be read in full, a member can make a motion to read it in full. The summary, rather than reading word for word, changes only for those zoning chapters tonight. Each of the items F through J that are being considered tonight have a savings clause which established that if any one provision of a chapter is stricken by the court, the balance of the provisions remain in full force and effect. We are now considering, uh, seven F, which is a public hearing and decision on first reading of an ordinance, dropping eleven regulations on purpose, authority, jurisdiction, and defense. So, uh, we are considering the agenda seven F. Zero seven, twenty twenty-five, which is for zoning chapter one, purpose, authority, jurisdiction, and basic principles. This ordinance, if enacted, sets out statutory purpose and authority for enacting zoning, which includes implementation of the growth. The zoning regulation, if acted, will apply to land within municipal boundaries of the city of Three Forks. This chapter sets out the principles such, uh, such acknowledgement that other regulations may also apply to the property. The obligation for reading, understanding proof, uh, burden of proof is one of the applicant. All applicant representations are binding and the applicant must be present at the hearing of the application. Finally, zoning permits are valid for one year and may be extended under certain circumstances. These regulations will be included in Title eleven with chapter numbers. Does any council, any member of the council want this zoning chapter one work spread in full?
No. No.
Pardon me? Uh, at this time, does the council have any questions for, uh, for Lee or for, for, uh, our staff?
Lee's not on.
Lee's not on?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I could, Lee was on for, for quite a while and he is getting up at four A M. to start traveling out to Montana. I suggested to him that, um, I thought between Crystal Kelly and I, we could handle any questions on these procedural chapters. So I, I let him go. Um, that was my choice.
Well, I saw a cat tail walking across the screen several times, so I thought maybe he had problems, so, okay. So at this time, uh, does any of the council have any questions? Garrett?
Um, you mentioned that the applicant needed to be present. Does that mean physically at the council meeting, would they be able to zoom in or have, uh, a legal representation?
It states that they can zoom or have a personal representative.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to pass zoning chapter one, purpose, authority, jurisdiction, basic principles, and, uh, right now I am asking for a motion to pass this.
And then we have a second reading sometime? Okay, so we're passing it to the second.
Right, this is the first.
Ordinance is required to have two readings, at least fifteen days apart. They don't become lost for thirty days on that, so we don't have a second reading until everything goes, but we might have two chapter ones, two chapter twos, two chapter threes, and so you guys get to it all.
Like, how many are there? We're going to be going through twenty-six of these, so this is why.
And the second readings will all happen on the same night, so they all go into effect on the same date, so we don't have old stuff mixing with new stuff that makes no sense.
Yeah?
I make a motion to pass on the readings of the ordinances.
Been moved to second again, and we've already had our discussion, so we'll have the vote then.
Public comment?
Uh, is there any public comment?
I haven't done any of them yet, so currently I need to.
Well, it'll take you about five hours, so.
No, no, they're not. These ones are, these are the very basic. Yeah. They're all on board stage, what's drafted so far, and then these, and all these ones will be out there as a final draft.
On, on this agenda, none of them have a number. Is there any chance you can give me the number?
They're on theirs, yeah. It's, we're starting with four oh seven.
Like F, is that four oh seven?
Okay, next one be four oh eight, next one be four oh nine, four ten.
I, so, I is four ten.
I will, and I'll read them. So the next ones, I'll read the numbers to you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I was trying to get caught up. I couldn't get there fast enough.
And are we voting on just the first, on four oh seven right now?
Yes.
Okay.
We have the vote.
Not yet.
Jean, yes, Reagan?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, Roxy?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we are now considering. Item seven G. Number four oh eight twenty twenty five, which is the zoning chapter two vested rights on conforming lots, uses and structures. This ordinance, if enacted, addresses the transition from the previous zoning regulations to be amended zoning regulations. When enacted, this chapter assuring the protection of, of the property rights vested. And explaining how these rights are addressed in the circumstances when used or structured. Does not now conform with the new zoning regulations enacted. It provides for how non-conforming vacant plots, uses, buildings and structures continue to function. After the new zoning regulations are enacted. Does any member of the council want the zoning, uh, chapter two ordinance to be read in full? Okay. At this time, do, does any of our council members or public, I will do with the council first, have any questions to our staff or Susan? On this ordinance four zero eight. Okay then. We'll have the vote, uh, or do I have a motion to accept this?
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance number four oh eight.
Thank you. Second, second has been moved in second, we have discussion, that's the public. We'll vote then, Jean?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Roxy?
Garrett?
Yes.
We now are considering agenda, uh, agenda item seven H. Ordinance four zero nine twenty twenty five, which is zoning chapter three, which addresses the various roles of administration and hearing authority. This ordinance, if enacted, recites the public process used by the three forks to commence, give public notice. And proceed with zoning regulation updates and amendments. This chapter instructs that applicant to be the owner of record for a designated representative. And establishes the process for accepting an application. The planning board role is recognized as established by law and sets all the requirements for the planning board. It also recognizes as established by the law of the board of adjustments and sets out the requirements. Section eleven dash three dash seven establishes the rules of conduct for the application applicant. And boards as to civil and orderly conduct as well as provides rules to address ex parte contact. Does the council want this zoning chapter three ordinance read in full?
No, no.
No.
Okay then. Does the council have any questions for Susan or for our staff?
No.
Then I would like to continue motion to pass zoning chapter three. Act of administration and then after, uh, then after your second, we'll have the vote.
I make, I make a motion. Accept ordinance four oh nine twenty twenty five and ordinance adopting the rewritten title. Eleven zoning regulations, chapter three actors in the administration of these regulations.
This has been moved in second. Public have any questions? And then we'll have the vote. Dean?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
We are now considering item seven I. Ordinance number four one zero twenty twenty five, which is zoning, chapter five zoning permit procedures. Ordinance, if enacted, establishes the requirements for review process and appeal process for zoning permits. It also establishes the expiration of zoning permits and. And a process to address changes in the above approved plans. This chapter five also describes the certificate of compliance documenting full and complete compliance with the regulations. Does any member of the council want this zoning chapter five ordinance to be read in full?
No.
No.
Okay then, does anyone? Uh, have questions to either Susan or our staff? About these orders? I would, uh, then entertain a motion to pass this, this zoning, chapter five zoning permit process. And, uh, we'll then have the vote. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number four ten dash twenty twenty five. An ordinance adopting the rewritten title. Twelve, eleven zoning regulations, chapter five zoning permit procedures.
Second.
Been moved in second. We'll have the vote, Jean?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Okay, now we are considering, I do believe, the last one, which is item seven J ordinance four eleven twenty twenty five. Which is zoning chapter seven, appeal and variance procedures. This ordinance, if enacted, establishes the requirements and review process for appeals from decisions. And variance for the, uh, zoning regulations. Purpose of this chapter is to comply with the enacted laws and ensure due process and procedures. Are, that are properly enacted and enforced. Does any of the council members, uh, would want this ordinance, chapter seven, read in full? Does anyone have, uh? Questions of either Susan or the staff?
I'll make a motion for, what, sorry.
Good, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance four eleven dash twenty twenty five. An ordinance adopting the rewritten title eleven zoning regulations, chapter seven.
A second. And it's been moved in section, second, we have discussion. We'll have the vote then. Is there any public comment on this? Dean?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yeah.
Garrett?
Yes.
And that concludes all of these, uh.
That's what you just voted on.
Oh, I have.
Yeah, we're moving on to dogs.
We're, we're moving on to dogs.
Sorry guys.
That's alright. I'm confused tonight too.
Okay.
Let me find the video here. Okay, uh. Item K, public hearing and decision on the first reading of an ordinance amending the, uh, sixth policy. Is that police or sick policy?
Police.
Police, okay, six police regulations, chapter four, A, animal control, dog, section three. To reduce the required neighbor notice from three hundred feet to three hundred, uh, to a hundred and fifty feet. City of Three Forks, Montana ordinance number four one, uh, two twenty twenty five, amending. Title six, uh, title six police regulations. Chapter, uh, four, animal control. Article A, dogs of the three forks code to reduce the distance of required neighborhood in, uh, notice. In six dash four A dash three point two, two point A from three hundred feet to a hundred and fifty feet. Whereas the city council amended. What used to be called a cattle license in title six, chapter four, article. A in February twenty twenty four, Vita Rosa ordinance number four zero two twenty twenty four. And referred to the new permit as additional dog's license. Whereas the revision in the ordinance number four zero two twenty twenty four stated neighbors within three hundred feet of the property applying for the additional. Dog permit will be notified, whereas since March fourteenth twenty twenty four, when ordinance four zero two. Dash twenty twenty four became law, there have been three applications. During notice to the neighbors, staff felt it, it excessive to notify properties up to three blocks away compared to certain zoning permits was only require a hundred and fifty feet. There are no public comment, there, there was no public comment at any of the three additional dog permit hearings. Whereas the public hearing for most of recent additional dog permit application staff asked the council if it would be. Am able to, uh, reducing the required notice from three hundred feet to a hundred and fifty feet, the council agreed. Therefore, pursuant to section seven dash one dash forty one twenty seven and forty one thirty one M C A. The city clerk published notice for the reading, uh, first reading of this ordinance. In the Bozeman Daily Chronicle on nine thirty twenty twenty five and the Belgrade News on nine twenty five twenty twenty five and three forks. Voice on ten one twenty twenty five, as well as posted on the city's Facebook page, website and around town at various physical locations, as is city policy. Now therefore be it ordained by the three forks city council. That title six, chapter four, A, section three is amended as follows, title six, chapter four, A, sixty three, additional dogs, dog or dogs permit. Eight. Limit on the number of dog applications in hearing, same, uh, one same as current, two same as current. And A, said application fee will be used to cover the cost of the staff to create. Or mail the notice to all property owners within a hundred and fifty feet excluding streets and alleys. In any direction from the applicant's property of the hearing scheduled before the city council to decide an additional dog permit application. This fee is non-refundable, saving except for these, uh, for the amendments described herein, remaining position, uh, provisions of the title, chapter and. Section are hereby confirmed and ratified as adopted. The first reading and approval dated this fourteenth day of October twenty twenty five. Council, do you have any questions on the, on this ordinance number four one two? Make a motion to accept ordinance number four twelve dash twenty twenty five. Amending title six police regulations, chapter four, animal control, article A, dogs of the three forks code to. Reduce the distance of required neighbor notice in six dash four A dash three point two A from three hundred feet to one hundred and fifty feet.
Second.
Been moved in second, does the public have any question, Nick?
Um, how many dogs, you're changing it from a kittle license to an additional dog?
It was changed a couple of years ago, already from a cattle license to additional and reducing. The notice that we send to all the neighbors of the application when it comes in for the public hearing from three hundred feet to one hundred.
That's the only bit it's actually changing? I'm not necessarily a fan because you can still hear those dogs burping that far off. Just personally.
So how many additional dog permits can one household have?
Only one. Only one?
Well, each one is an application, some have applied for five at a time or six, you know, until maybe they had conditions that said as the animals. Passed away, they didn't repair, replace them until they got down to the three numbers, so there's, there was a couple like that for a while. But you can only have one, and so each one is a different, the additional dog permit was changed from cattle license, it did have six, but those, there's some that are still out there. To, you only have a total of one extra dog, so meaning four.
Any other questions, council or public? Has been moved in second, then we'll have the vote, Jean?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Roxy? And Garrett?
Yes.
Now we'll have report of officers, so, Des, you're here, do you have anything for us tonight?
Sure, I just got the, uh, call for service numbers, so, um, September, we're off to a busy month, or, excuse me. October, we're off to a busy month, we're already at a hundred and forty four calls for service. And October, we had a hundred and eighty six, so.
September? September, you had a hundred and eighty six?
Yeah, September had a hundred and eighty six, October, we're off to one forty four.
Wow.
Earl. Well, thank you, Des.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Uh, Crystal?
I'm gonna use this opportunity to say some things that I don't think the council or the public knows. How much goes on here about the city clerk and her responsibilities or the city treasurers and their responsibilities? You guys sign up us for projects all the time, like the water P E R, the long range transportation plan. The water project which has two phases and now a third going on for us to build our own wellhouse so that we can keep grant money. Um, hatching streets, paving alleys, impact fees and rewriting that ordinance and all, I mean, that's, that's five or six that I could think of on the top of my head. You don't attend those meetings we do, so when we ask to reduce our time is because we are going to all sorts of meetings and. For, on your behalf to report back on these, a lot of times, I don't report back on it because nobody has any comments or questions about it. But council members used to attend water projects, you know, and know what was going on and make the decisions. Which, I think Susan Hayes will be on here to ask you some things like that tonight, but there are. Ongoing Tuesday meetings, Monday meetings with the zoning rewrite and Lee and Susan, Kelly, myself and Randy Carpenter. Um, all sorts of things that go on as well as making sure the day to day operations happen. And the fact that Ms. Bublin said, I would love to have an invite, really pissed me off. Because I go above and beyond and I sent everybody that wrote about, wrote an email about that on nine twenty six, what was happening? The minutes that I had drafted, which were not done, but I highlighted the areas of what was happening, um. Sent hyperlinks of where things would be when it was drafted, because I was working off the direction that was handed up at the ordinance committee. And every meeting after any coordinate committee, the council has committee reports. And they always provide whatever happened at that previous meeting or maybe no decision or anything like that, but that. I don't feel that I have to give, or anybody in the city has to give anybody in the public. More than I'm already offering, when is it the public's job to? Do their due diligence and know what's going on in every resolution and ordinance that you have, I put a whereas in there that says. We meant the legalities of seven dash one dash forty one twenty seven M C A by noticing it in the paper, you only have to do that twice. We notice it in three papers, in case you don't read the Belgrade News or the Three Forks Voice or the Bozeman Daily Chronicle. It's on our website, we provide that opportunity, we provide social media. People can sign up and mailchimp and get emails, they can sign up from our website and get emails of what's going on. And it's physically posted around town for those residents that don't have email and don't do digital. It's posted in five places around town, it's posted on our windows, so I think people have the opportunity to be part of their government, it's on you. To know what is going on in here, we do way more than we keep, than we have to, and we always. I don't know if we're gonna have service with a smile today, but I'm trying to. Still be pleasant to the person that's asking for anything, and I am sorry, Mickey, that you think that that information was BS. There's so much that we have to redact and it's not easy to, to pull the data that you wanted without. Putting it in an Excel spreadsheet and cutting out what it was, it did take six hours. So I apologize that it wasn't useful and maybe if you wanted to sit down and ask. How we can compile it or it's in Excel and we do a top tally for you or something like that, instead of just giving you the, the actual data and no tally. I mean, we could have, we could have done that and, but you haven't asked for any of that and you haven't responded to any of the emails that I've sent, so. I just wanna say that, I don't say a lot of what's going on all the time, like the nine thirty one report's done, hail made it, and we haven't had any violations on anything, we got, we got. Uh, audited by the D E Q or whatever, I mean, we get surprised all the time, Department of Labor and all that stuff runs smoothly for you guys. So I take offense to the fact that we should now take our safety into our own hands and not have lunches at the same time and leave one person in here by themselves, which is. Which is when I had to pull the panic button once, so. I'm, I'm, I can hear the upsetness in my voice and I'm sorry about that, but it. I took offense to the things that were said today that we did not provide for you and that we weren't listening.
I just wanna add that what's going on at the library is dictated by the library board, city hall does payroll and that, but everything's going on at the library. Is not, you guys don't hire and fire, we don't hire and fire, the library board handles that, um yes, there's some issues down there, but. It's kind of out of our control because the library is a separate entity with their own MCAs, we do their books. Um so it's, it's not the city council or city hall having anything to do with what's going on in the library at this point, we're trying to keep them legally. So on the line, but um I don't know what's going on down there because the board oversees everybody there. And I agree with Crystal, I mean, if somebody thinks we're not doing our jobs and we're sitting in here on our butts doing nothing, come in here and spend today. I mean, spend the whole day in here and see how many times that phone rings and you're doing one thing, you get interrupted and you're doing another thing, you get interrupted. Trying to focus, when I did the reports for Mickey, I tried to spend the whole time while these guys answered the phone so I could document my time. But I was told I could not give addresses, I could not give names, I had to redact all that because that is not public information. So the reports we get have all that, we just couldn't give it to you. So I tried to give information that I could give in the short amount of time we had and it probably wasn't that helpful and I understand that, but I tried to give you what I could. But it was a very short timeframe to get it in and we had to take people's names and addresses out, so that didn't give you a lot of the information you probably. But I really don't think that people understand everything that goes on in here on a daily basis.
I would like to add to your library stuff that the library literally. Cut the city out on all their projects of this year. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you guys for all you do, I I see it every day. Okay, uh. At this time, are there any reports from council committees? And uh next section unfinished business, flood mitigation project update, Kelly.
Um we had an in-person meeting on the first because our preliminary maps. Are starting the process to become approved, which we knew was coming. It can take, once we had to have, there's one meeting that has to happen and that was the meeting we had on the first. Um but it can take six months to a year for the maps to go live.
There is a high chance, like I said before, the new maps might go live before our project is completely done. To the flood mitigation project, we know the county has to approve the maps. Before FEMA can say we're out of the flood plain because our project is based on the new maps. So um our engineers are working with the county because the project is all being, it's in the county, none of the work is going to be in the city limits, but it protects the city limits from the flood. Um but the county needs to approve the new maps so they can say here's our solution to the new maps. City will have to adopt them, hopefully we can not have it adopted um until after the project is done, but if we do. Be prepared or will be prepared because anybody that's in the new flood plain or floodway will be required by mortgage companies to get flood insurance. Until the project is done, there are, there is an old standing which I've asked DNR to find out if it's true. If you have FEMA flood insurance in the past, if you proved within a year that you were out of the flood sign, they gave you a full refund. FEMA has revamped their flood insurance, it's called uh NFIP two point oh. And nobody knows that that's still the case, so DNRC was gonna try to find out if that's still the case, that people can get a refund because then if they have to pay it. They would get refunded when our project was done, they're also trying to see FEMA, they've talked about FEMA doing a monthly premium, right now you pay a year in advance. There's there, FEMA's been talking about doing a monthly premium, which would mean people might have to pay one or two months of premium of flood insurance and then it would come off, but. It could be a lot of people having to pay flood insurance and then they'll come out of it and financially that's gonna hurt people, but. FEMA's getting the maps approved, we're doing the project, hopefully it all works out okay, but it may not. But um they were seventy five percent done with the plans as of October first, they need to get to ninety so we can send everything in, I'm hoping. November meeting, they will have it at ninety and then we will also have a map of what's happening with the Madison. At ninety percent, they will have the map done where it pulls the Jefferson completely out and only leaves the Madison flood plain, so we'll know what's gonna happen on. The east side of town with the flood plains, right now we don't know which properties are affected by the Madison or Jeff, the Jefferson hits everything, but we don't know how much the maps. So once we have that and, because anybody that comes in and wants to build. On that side, I can't tell them if they're gonna be on the new map, the current map, the new map or no map. So it's up in the air for anybody wanting to do any construction on the east side of town right now, but we give them all the information and they can make the decision if they want to start to build now or wait for the project.
So, Kelly?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Susan Hayes is on too.
Susan Hayes, what do you got for us tonight?
Hello, um I know you guys have been there for quite a while this evening, so I will try and keep this as brief as I can. I do have a few questions that I I don't know that you necessarily need to answer for me this evening. It might be in everybody's best interest if we schedule the water and sewer committee meeting. So I will go through my update and I'll let you know what my questions are and you can let me know how you would best like to proceed. Um so just to start off with the water distribution project that is complete. Um Amerine has submitted their last pay application and we are releasing all of their retain, retainage, they have completed their punch list. Um so that work is done, we will have a warranty walkthrough next August. Because they do have a one-year warranty timeframe on the distribution, so if anything comes up over the next twelve months, we will be letting them know. As things come up, we won't wait until the warranty walkthrough to let them know something that occurs, say in three months from now. Um but in general, that project went quite well, um we did have a few struggles at the beginning. Um due to wet material and some subgrade stabilization. But overall, the project went well, we did some additional street patching that needed to be done. Um we did utilize a fair bit of the contingency, but I think in the end that was all uh money well spent and. I I believe everybody is is pretty satisfied, Amerine did a great job of communicating. With residents and Kelly and Crystal were a huge help fielding emails and phone calls and letting us know. When sprinkler lines got hit or just miscellaneous items that came up that we needed to let the contractor know about. Um so that was also really helpful and I. With uh finishing that project, we've expended the ARPA competitive grant, which had an expiration date of the end of this year. Um so with the consent agenda, we are closing out that ARPA competitive grant, which is great news. Does anybody have any questions on the distribution project? Hearing none, um moving on to the water supply project. Um well, twelve. Go ahead, sorry, Jean.
This doesn't have anything to do with the project, but as an engineer, would you recommend that we chip seal those areas? That were tore up and regained?
Um I believe that Steve's plan, I I would have to admit to not doing a lot of resurfacing work myself, I I typically focus on. Water treatment and water distribution, so I would probably um ask Carl in our Helena office what he would think, but I think that's Steve's typical approach. Um and I think it's a good way to um add a little bit of cohesiveness between your patched areas and the original pavement that's there. Um just to prevent infiltration of water and then, you know, freeze thaw happening there and and getting pop out potholes, so yeah, I do think it's a good idea.
Thank you, sorry to ask you a question, you could.
That's okay, happens all the time. So on the well project, um well twelve, which is that two hundred gallon a minute well where they're constructing the wellhouse right now. Um that well has the pitless adapter installed now and I believe Steve and his crews have the pipeline installed. Uh between that and the new wellhouse, um we are just waiting for pump installation. They ran the electrical line extension out this week, Northwestern Energy did. I don't believe the panel is up yet on the wellhouse however, so it's not energized, we don't have a pump installed there, but we're getting close. Um well eleven up at the tank, the surface seal is complete, we still need the pitless adapter installed, but. Um uh O'Keefe is under contract to complete that. Um well thirteen is the well just a little bit to the south of well twelve, south of the wellhouse. Um we did run into some issues um developing that well, um when they originally drilled it, we thought it would have a capacity of around a hundred and fifty gallons a minute. During development, um that was greatly reduced and. We did some additional development and it has improved and right now I believe it looks like it will be ninety to a hundred gallons a minute. So not as productive as we were hoping, um but still puts the city in a good position in terms of supply. Um I went over that um with Kelly just recently and. Even with that reduced capacity, the the city is in a very good position in terms of having. Sufficient capacity to serve over four thousand residents, which is that high population number that was in the planning documents. Um so with the connection of these three wells. You're sitting very good in terms of source of supply and should, will be able to reduce reliance on. Wells nine and ten which have lower water quality, um and then well two, if you so choose to save money on running the arsenic treatment plant. Um so overall, once we get well thirteen complete. There, they have to rerun the pump test on that well now because we had to do additional development and clean it out. And they should be starting on that tomorrow, O'Keefe should have been mobilizing today to get back out to do more pumping and then rerun the pump test. The pitless adapter for that well um is already purchased, Steve has already installed the pipe um between well thirteen and the wellhouse. So everything is coming together, um a little slower than I want, but um still on track to get everything complete by the end of the year. Um so that's in pretty good shape. What I have questions about is related to the funding sources that we have and. The city was lucky to get a lot of funding from ARPA when it was rolled out. Um but now we have to expend all of the ARPA funds by the end of the year. Um which we just closed out the ARPA competitive, that was two million dollars, um so that was great. The next one that we're looking at trying to draw down is the MSEP grant, which you guys were awarded six hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in MSEP grant. And we are utilizing those funds to pay O'Keefe. But when we approached MSEP about utilizing the funds to pay for the wellhouse, having the city act as the general contractor. Their legal team said no, um that we were not allowed to do that. So now we're working to find pieces that we can spend the MSEP dollars on. Um my estimate, once we finish paying O'Keefe, including the change orders that they have been awarded. There will still be two hundred and twenty thousand dollars remaining in MSEP funds. That either have to be spent by the end of the year or we've been told they need to be returned to the MSEP grant program. Um I am a little unclear. From MSEP what they, it's because they're ARPA funds, typically MSEP grants extensions, which had been our plan. They are not granting extensions because their MSEP was funded by ARPA in the twenty twenty three biennium, so. I'm looking at ideas for what ARPA will, or excuse me, what MSEP will find acceptable to spend these, these dollars on. Because you did raise water rates in order to ensure that you were able to utilize the full six hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Um but again, with the decision about the wellhouse. Suddenly we're, I I don't wanna say struggling, but maybe a little bit trying to find what MSEP will allow us to spend the money on. Um I have a couple of ideas, um we have. The natural gas line, you guys opted for natural gas generators at the new wellhouse and at well six A. And we had decided to not install the natural gas service to the well twelve site at this time. Because it was anticipated that three forks development was going to be running natural gas to their planned subdivision. Between the sewer plant and the Ridgeview subdivision and we were going to wait. Uh for that to happen so that you could run natural gas to the new generator at a later date uh for less cost. However, I do not. Do not see three forks development moving on that right now, uh it had been my understanding that they were going to start installing utilities. Late this year or early next year and I have not heard that that is still going to happen. And I believe that we can utilize MSEP funds to run the natural gas line, so that is one idea, the quote that we had gotten from Northwestern Energy is that it would be. About seventy thousand dollars to run the natural gas line out to the wellhouse, so I think that is an option. The other option is. Uh you're currently getting quotes from electricians to help with the electrical work at the wellhouse. Um and there is some controls that need to be installed, uh telemetry for the new wells to run on the SCADA system. And I think that we can ask the suppliers there to break out the cost of the control panels specifically. Um and potentially uh do a subcontract for that through O'Keefe. They're already under contract, O'Keefe is, and MSEP finds it acceptable um to. If we have change orders that are directly related to the construction of the wells, construction and operation of the wells and we are running it through a contractor that was selected through. Public bidding, which O'Keefe was, um that we can change order items into that, I would clarify that with MSEP before we move that direction, but that's. Another idea. And beyond that, I I am struggling a bit trying to find other things that we can spend the MSEP dollars on. So again, I don't need a decision this evening, but uh those are my ideas of how to utilize MSEP dollars. I I've spoken to Kelly and Crystal and Steve about it quite extensively, um and that's. Where we sit, we we did try and reallocate the MSEP dollars to other parts of the project, distribution wise and. Um unfortunately, we've been told no on multiple occasions now by Department of Commerce, so. That's where we sit on the MSEP money, if anybody has any questions about that or. If you want to give some direction, I'm I'm happy to take it.
Could it be used for paving?
Nope.
Can't be used to paving.
That's one of the things we asked.
I was thinking into the well sites and stuff, because it's kind of a bumpy country out there, it would be nice if that area was paved.
We didn't plan to pave any of the area out to the wellsite, we were just gonna gravel that, um because we were really only just having, I mean, there is an access spot to well thirteen. Um but really, it's just the access to to well twelve where the wellhouse is going to be and that's pretty well built up at this point in time. Um and I think for them to accept it, we would have to separate it out and we would have to bid it and award it and it would have to be complete. By the end of the year and we're kind of out of the paving window, unfortunately.
Is this something that the water and sewer committee needs to meet about and make a recommendation?
I guess I'm not positive whether or not we need the water and sewer committee to meet on it, um if you. Kelly and Crystal, perhaps you can give me some direction there, I mean, we talked about the natural gas previously and decided not to do it. Um I mean, that's the the biggest ticket item that I believe we could utilize MSEP dollars on. Um and we are, like I said, already got a quote from Northwestern Energy, I would just have to see if they can complete it by the end of the year. If that's something you want to do, but if if you would prefer to. Sit down and discuss more in depth or see if we can come up with other ideas, then perhaps it would be best to have the water and sewer committee. I'm open.
This is Kelly, the Northwestern Energy line was like fifty five thousand?
Uh seventy thousand.
It showed that a hundred and fifty thousand to burn, come on, girl.
I know. We've asked to use it on a lot of different things that I thought were. Really shoe wins, um it it's been a bit frustrating, I have to say, um. I mean, I'm still trying to come up with other ideas, but because they're being very narrow in their interpretation. Of what we can utilize the funds on, it is, like I said, it's challenging.
So Susan, on the controls like uh with O'Keefe, would that be drives?
They're already, they're already purchasing the drives, um we already change ordered that in the the pumps, motors and drive, O'Keefe is already purchasing those, that was on the last. Or change order that you approved for them, um the control panels themselves, I, this is the the portion that AE two S puts together for you guys. Um that the actual control panels with the IO um and stuff in them, that's the other portion that I. I feel pretty confident. I feel pretty confident that we can show is directly related to the operation of the wells. And is a very, it's a very straightforward item, because it's just materials that we could present to MSEP and say, we have to have these in order for the wells to run with the rest of the system. It's just a material cost. The installation would be held as, would be completed as part of the electrical for the well house itself, which we are not asking to use MSEP funds on, because they told us we could not. So I feel like it's an easy piece to break out. And we can clearly show that there is, it's related to the wells, but is not something that that we need to include as part of the well house, I guess, which, like I said, they said they won't pay for. So that's my thought on those.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Susan?
Are we needing to make a recommendation tonight?
Why don't you hear my other stuff and then you guys can decide if you want to have a water?
Thank you.
Oh yeah, I got more. So then the other pool of funds that you guys still have are the, the ARPA MAG funds and the ARPA LFR funds. And most, a lot of the MAG, some of the MAG funds were recently used to pay for contingency on the distribution project. They're used for a variety of things. But one of the things I can add up really easily is the engineering. The engineering gets paid for out of the MAG funds. And there are currently $246,000 remaining in the ARPA. The MAG is the minimum allocation grant. There's $246,000 remaining in there under activity costs, you know, primarily for engineering, like I said. A approximately 20 to 25,000 of that, we will likely utilize for finishing the record drawings for the distribution system, doing closeout documentation, the warranty walkthrough, that sort of thing. The, and then we also are utilizing those funds to pay for Task Order 9, which is the oversight of the well construction, which Hydro Solutions is our subcontractor on that. Also RPR activities and construction administration, submit a review such as that for the well house itself and the construction happening there. And that, the contract for that remaining is about $120,000. Because of the way the city is constructing the well house, I don't anticipate that all of that money will be utilized. All of those engineering dollars will be utilized, but because there's still a fair bit to be completed, I'm a little hesitant to say how much won't be utilized, so. And then we also have a contract currently for the design of the redundant transmission main through the Ridgeview subdivision, which we've only completed the preliminary design on, simply because we've been quite busy doing all of the other things and it's not as high of a priority. And there is a contract that exists for that. If we look at just the engineering for the distribution system and the wells, if we take that out of what's left in the MAG funds, there's about $101,000 left. And I guess I, I'm looking for, I have some ideas and then some feedback on what the city would like to spend those dollars on. And this has a little bit to do with the, the Ridgeview subdivision, that redundant transmission main. I guess I would like to know if the city would like us to move forward with the design of that and finish the design before the end of the year and use MAG funds on that. Or if you would like me to basically push pause on that, because you would rather utilize the rest of those grant funds on other higher priority items for the city, if you have them. And the things that I thought of were completing the construction of the well house. The way it sits right now, you were going to be utilizing impact fees and city funds for all of the construction of the well house. But you could utilize some of the MAG funds on that so that you utilize the impact fees, but less of the city funds. You can also purchase the generators. There's two generators scheduled to be purchased, one at well 12 and one at 6A. I have not seen a cost for those generators yet, but I think that would be something that you could spend the MAG funds on. I didn't have an opportunity to ask Kelly and Crystal about this ahead of time, but you are having AE2S do additional integration programming for the wells. And I'm not certain where you were intending to put their invoices, but I think those could be put under the MAG funds. The other idea I had was to potentially pre-purchase pipe for the redundant transmission main running from the tank down through Ridgeview subdivision. I, I know what size pipe that is going to be, and I have, you know, a pretty good idea of how many linear feet you need. I just don't have the design done yet in terms of the plan and profile drawings in order to go to bid. And then we had talked about at some point this summer whether or not the city was interested in installing a pump in well eight for selling bulk water, non-potable. So those are the, those are the items that I've thought of. You do also have $72,500 in LFR, uh, ARPA funds that also need to be expended by the end of the year. So it's kind of an interesting position to be in. This money needs to get spent. And the city's been working really hard to get it out the door, and somehow we're, we're still needing to find a spot for all of it. So I guess question number one is whether or not you'd like us to pause on the Ridgeview subdivision design. And then I, I can leave it up mostly to Crystal and Kelly what to spend the MAG funds on, but it would be helpful if I have an idea of which direction you want to go. I mean, I don't need to be involved in all of that necessarily, like if you're paying AE2S invoices with MAG funds, aside from we need to keep track of it, you know, in terms of the, the balance sheet and kind of have an idea of what we need to work with, what we need to expend before the end of the year.
Most of this would fall, fall under sewer and water.
It has to be under sewer and water, yes. But primarily water is where it's allocated at the moment. This is a water project. That's where the money is going.
So how much time do you need?
For, for the work I'm doing?
With, with the Sewer and Water Committee to where maybe we could formalize how to use these funds and submit them to make sure that we can use them that way. And to give you some direction. I mean, I, I could see meeting sometime this week or early next week. You know, December 31st is going to come sooner than we think.
Oh, it's sneaking up very fast. Early next week would work best for me, simply because I'm out of town Thursday, Friday this week. But I can do any day next week.
Water Sewer Committee is you, Ed and Garrett.
So I know me and Ed are pretty much available about Tuesday.
Fridays work better for Garrett.
Yeah, but if we need to do it early in the week, I can get off work.
Well, we can meet after five o'clock too.
Yeah, I, I can do the evening too, Garrett. It's not, not a big deal.
You can't do Wednesday night because it's raining.
Like 6:30 on Monday? Is that okay for everybody?
That'll work.
That's the 20th? Okay, let's go that way, Susan, and we'll see how we can handle this terrible problem we have spending money, so.
Yeah, sorry to have so much this late in the evening, but it's, we keep thinking we have a, a plan and then we kind of keep getting shut down a little bit and from various areas. So I appreciate you guys.
Here probably sooner than we want to. That's the thing I'm thinking about also.
What's that, Jean? Sorry, I didn't hear what you said first.
Meeting with weather.
Yeah.
Getting cold.
Yeah, for sure.
I hope I'm wrong.
You might be, we'll find out. Okay, did anybody have any other questions?
We'll see you Monday night then, Susan.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, our next item of business is to award the fiscal year 2026 to 2028 audit contract to Redding Company for $112,500. So this is a three-year contract, Kelly?
Yeah, it's the only bid we got.
And how much has it went up from the last time?
I was talking in my head, I want to say like $5,000 per year.
Per year?
And it went down the next year.
And it includes a single audit in there too, because we're known, we're going to have to have them, isn't that like first year?
That's an addition though.
Yeah.
But yeah, this, this past year, we have to do a single audit, because we spent more than $750,000 in grant funds, federal grant funds. And then this, this next year, we know the FEMA project, we're going to spend more than that too, so they have to do a single audit, which I believe is almost $10,000 for each single audit on each fund. But the actual audit cost went up about $5,000 for the next year, that they're the only ones that put in a bid for us.
They're the only ones that submitted a bid?
Yeah.
Guess we really don't have a choice.
Much of them, much of them are getting out of government. They don't, aren't doing government audits anymore.
We did the notice in the paper like we're supposed to on our websites around in, like on the legal cities in town, but we also sent it to a whole bunch of firms in Bozeman, Helena, Livingston, just to make sure they knew it was around there, could case people to read the legal section.
I make a motion that the city accept the bid from Redding Company for our audit for the fiscal year 2026 through fiscal year 2028. Then move to second. We'll have the vote. Jean?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yes.
And Garrett?
Yes.
At this time of our agenda, are there any public comments or concerns for items not on the agenda? Okay then. Our next item will be mayor and council announcements. I just have a few things here. As you know, we approved paving companies to come in and do some alley approaches, and I was talking with Steve today. That's the alley approaches are done. And they're really looking nice and some passion is done, and there are still some questionable, so. The whole idea of this is to keep it under $80,000, which we, we are going to, but Acme's doing a real good job for us. That's all I have.
Great fix at the end of March.
So is there any other council announcements? Okay. So our next council meeting will be held on the 13th of November. And at this time, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I might move away something on that agenda.
Okay.
The headquarter stress system on that agenda?
Like your annual report?
No, to ask for permission to submit grants.
But you can use some of the MSEP money. You just got all your cash for one, now you're going to get more cash?
What's that?
You just got all the cash from last year's grants, now you're going to buy for more?
Expend it all.
I know.
I'm over it. Here we adjourn.
Is there a second? Okay. Thanks for coming, guys. Was that my expression on the face all right?
I don't understand.
Wait, pass your math time.
It pisses me off that they're trying to put the rent rate here, because we spend a lot of time. Make it easy on the tenants, and they don't even care.
They're claiming that they have, they have, they are now there, they're the terrorists. Rent it for something you can put in the lease. And right there, you're exactly right, finding out what the bill is and paying very much.
Having a history here, having to show your eyes. Every dime they can get, whether they deserve it or not.
Gilbert?
All this is part of it.
I don't know too much about that. You know, she owns one of the places. And that place rents every year, one year. And then the tenants go, she was triple my rent.
Oh, well.
Every year.
But it's not the city, it's the neighborhood. I'm taking George Chandler.
Robert Buholz.
My understanding.